Okay, good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. It's 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left, Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Corner, Commissioner Rachel Grant, and Commissioners Emily Claus and Caroline Mejia from Zoom, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings, Jennifer Walker, and we have public virtual attendance on Thurston County YouTube Channel. First up this morning is to review the draft agenda for this afternoon's board meeting. This is second review of that agenda and we'll call it to order at 2:00 p.m. Pledge of Allegiance. I believe we're up to District 3, so I guess I'll be leading that. And then we'll have Land Management, Food and Agenda, Public Comment, County Managers Update, Standing Intro Items, anything County Manager has to cover. We have Consent Agenda that includes items 4A through I. 4A is a subrecipient agreement with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity for the 2025 Energized Thurston Campaign.
Morning Rebecca.
Good morning, everyone. Rebecca Harvey, Climate Mitigation Senior. So this is a subrecipient agreement with South Puget Sound Habitat for Humanity to administer the low and moderate income pathway for the upcoming Energized Thurston Campaign. We talked about it last week. There was a question from Commissioner Mensah about verification and oversight of the subrecipients specifically related to language, protecting the county, to monitor Habitat specifically related to income verification. And we did complete the PAO's review and I worked with the contract manager. We have added a monitoring agreement or monitoring plan, an assessment plan, as Exhibit I to the agreement. And this is the county's template monitoring plan, which includes information that Habitat will have to provide to us when they submit their first monthly expenditure report. They will send this back and it's with information on the subrecipients' financial management system, policy procedures, record retention, audit requirements, and then also room to do a post-monitoring review with them. So this is, I guess, documentation of going forward, all the interactions with them and just a place where we can track and monitor. I'd also point you to Sections 14, 21, and 22 of the agreement itself, which have language protecting the county in terms of termination and closeout records and reports and audits.
So Rebecca, I think what I'm hearing is good question from Commissioner Mensah. You already had monitoring language in the contract and we put build suspenders, another piece on there. So thank you for that.
Are there any other questions about the agreement?
Questions? Very many. Thank you. Appreciate the follow-up. Okay, Item 4B, Resolution to Reclassify Position, Public Works Senior Civil Engineer. Maria Fonte, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I'm here to present a request from the Public Works Department to reclassify a vacant senior civil engineer to a senior management analyst, which they utilize as a budget analyst. Last week, there was a question about the senior civil engineer position. And as a reminder, that was a new position they got in a previous budget and it was never filled. And after Karen's promotion to a Public Works Director, there was a void in having somebody that could oversee the budget and fiscal programs. And so this request is based on that. Their budget is 130 million. They have a capital budget of 50 million and they manage 16 funds. So this is a mission-critical position. We've evaluated the duties. They fit within the budget, Senior Management Analyst. And the increase is $492 per month, which is distributed among several public work funds, including roads, solid waste, stormwater, and sewer and water. Any follow-up questions from last week?
Questions from Maria? There are none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go to 4C, Resolution and Call for Sealed Bids for Furnishing a Supply of Various Asphalt Materials.
Good morning Commissioners, County Manager, Management, County Engineer, and Pinch Hitting for Michael Omen, our Operations Manager this morning. So this is a call for sealed bids to go out for a contract to get a vendor to furnish us all of our supplies in terms of asphalt to perform any roadway maintenance in the upcoming year. This is typical. We do this contract every year. You didn't have any questions last week to follow up on, but be happy to answer any.
Things come up? Okay, straightforward. Thank you, Matt. Next up is Right-of-Way Vacation on a Port Portion of Unopened Right-of-Way in the Platte of West Olympia.
Yeah, there was nothing to follow up on this item either, but just to summarize what this item is. This item's requesting that the Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution to vacate a portion of right-of-way in West Olympia. A public hearing was held in November. We received no public comment. A hearings examiner determined that the right-of-way was never opened or used for public travel and the county even lost the authority to open the right-of-way because an RCW prevents that, basically says that if it's not open within five years, the county loses interest in it. And that dedication was in 1869, so.
Hey, we missed our window.
By a little bit.
Yeah. Okay, fair enough. Any questions on that? All right, next up is Reappointment to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Did I miss one?
Commissioners Jeff Bigford, Solid Waste Manager in Public Works. This is a request to reappoint Jean Cathy, Councilwoman Cathy. She has been served on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for over 10 years. With the positions from city representatives, they are recommended by the city for approval by the board to seat them. And I'd like to answer any other questions you might have.
Questions on the Tom Water Appointment to SWAC? Next up is F, Setting a Public Hearing to Consider Application of Dana Passage Water System for Non-Exclusive Franchise for Water Distribution System in Thurston County Right-of-Way.
Just provide a quick summary of what this item is. We're just requesting the Board of County Commissioners set a public hearing to consider a franchise agreement for the Dana Water, or excuse me, the Dana Passage Water System. This system is located at, off of 81st, which extends between Libby and Zingle Road. The existing system has 79 connections and more than three miles of pipe that are 60 years old. And the leak rate is actually greater than 25%. So it's a necessary project.
Any questions on this? No, very good. Item G, Sale of Tax Title Property Via Private Negotiation to David and Kimberly Clark, Treasurer's Office. And we have the Treasurer himself. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you. Jeff Gadman, Thurston County Treasurer. Thank you for your time this morning in consideration of this. So what I've got is three properties that are coming before you today. The first two are out on Stedman Road. They are old abandoned railroad right-of-way and they were owned by off-site people. These, all three of these today are the result of the letters we've been sending out to adjacent property owners. So these two on Stedman Road are being bought by, people have farms right next to these properties. So they're long and narrow, but they'll fit well with these properties. The third one is also being bought by adjacent property owners down on Walla Creek Road. It's a leftover after, as they cut up the section and it's 60 feet wide by a mile long and actually crosses Walla Creek Road.
So weird.
Yeah, it's an interesting piece.
There was a guy a few years ago called us about it and he was thinking about doing something, setting up like an RV park. He thought it would be good, yeah. But I don't think utilities were available and he ultimately decided it was just going to be too expensive. So we're going to be happy to get it off the books.
Hey, any questions for Jeff on the tax titled property sales? So. Oh, there's three. Okay, I got you. They're all separate items. Okay, so this is actually covering GH and I.
Yes.
Any questions from the Board on GHRI? Nope.
Awesome. Thank you all. Have a good day.
Okay, then we'll have a department item for Public Works, 5A, Contract Award for Johnson Point Road and Hawks Prairie Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Matt Unsman again, Thurston County Engineer. Brian Meyer will be presenting this item for your consideration this afternoon. Brian is our Engineering Services Manager. This item is requesting approval to award the contract for the Johnson Point and Hawks Prairie project. We received 11 bids for this project. The lower responsive bid was from Active Construction Incorporated, or ACI, from Tacoma, Washington, with a bid amount of $2,174,174. This project's going to be constructing a roundabout at that intersection, which will address traffic concerns as well as a collision history pattern at that intersection as well. Construction will be paid for using $2 million in federal grant funding and the remainder will come from transportation impact fees.
That's good.
It is good.
Okay, questions on that one?
Except for that's the way home that I drive, so that's not good for me.
That's not good.
All right. All right, very good. All right, then we'll have Commission Reports adjourned and there's no public hearings today. So we have a fairly compact meeting depending on public comment. Okay, next up is Review of Advisory Boards. I know we had one outstanding item from last week where we were considering four applicants for the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee Appointment. Clerk of the Board, are there any others we need to address besides Lodging Tax?
That is the only one that we'd like to receive direction on today. There is some others that we're providing as informational today and would like to circle back on those next week during the agenda setting. So as the packets come around.
Thank you. This is new then. So this is the bracket information. Want to walk through the two packets?
Yeah, so first we'd like to circle back to LTAC and see if there were any questions after reports reviewed. Or if there's any direction from the Board for an appointment.
Okay, so did the Board have interest in discussing a selection or did anyone need, still need additional time or are we at? I guess I'm, I asked for more time last week. I'm ready to discuss it, but I don't think there's a huge rush, so I guess it's up to the Board.
I think the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee would, could use the appointment and we need to get going on that. I reviewed the applicants and I'd like to suggest or make a motion to appoint Lynn Roy.
I'll comment on that too. That I would second that.
Okay, motion is second to appoint Lynn Roy for this appointment. Any discussion on that? That was going to be my choice as well. I looked at everyone's application. I mean, but Lynn Roy, if you, she just is like superwoman in South County. So it's to have somebody that can sort of bring South County to the table and in that kind of powerhouse way, I just think is a good opportunity for us to.
Yeah, her energy's good. If you've gone to any of the steady meetings, she's done several presentations on Yellens Parks and Rec stuff and she's brought a bunch of events to their community and.
Mush ball.
Yeah.
Yep, I'm already on a team. Forgot that settle yesterday. Yeah, I think that I also would agree that the energy that she brings and the amount of work that, you know, and the representation of South County is really important, so.
Yeah, and it's been the case, like it's not just like Johnny come lately. I mean, she's been doing this since before I got on the County Commission and in multiple roles. She was like leader of the chamber and then, I don't know all the different groups, but she's kind of migrated to different groups and brought the same energy. So I'd say we're in good hands if we go with that. So motion second. If there's no other discussion, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. That one covers that one. So I'll go back to Clerk of the Board. What else do we need to go through?
Thank you. So for that appointment, we'll include that on this afternoon.
Okay.
So just to quickly review the others, I'll just run down the list. And again, this is just informational today. We'll circle back next week on each of these items. Gary Klein and Chris Dolman have both applied for reappointment to the Agriculture Advisory Committee and are eligible and have been recommended by the committee for reappointment. Nick George has applied for appointment to the committee for the vacant farmer seat and is eligible and recommended by the committee. For the Civil Service Commission, Nicole See has applied for the seat recently vacated by Jennifer Roberts. Nicole is eligible and due to the small roster of the commission, applications have not historically been provided to the commission for their review prior to coming to the Board, like some of our others. For the Historic Commission, Bill Lindstrom and Chris Hoffman have both applied for reappointment and are eligible. They are both recommended for reappointment by the Historic Commission. For the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees, we have two different items to discuss, which is the Thurston County At-Large Seat and an appointment by Mason County. For the Thurston County At-Large Representative Seat, Jaclyn Morris, Gail Gouton, and Arabella Roslin have applied for the vacant seat. In the past, the Board has interviewed applicants during a boardwork session that is not live-streamed. And so this is for you to discuss how you'd like to proceed with that again.
Okay.
Yeah. I just had a recommendation. You're done. Yeah, so my recommendation is to move forward with the Agricultural Advisory Committee members. Those are all reappointments and they've been recommended by the committee. I would say wait on the Civil Service Commission so we have some time to review the application. Same thing with the Historic Commission is to move forward on those reappointments. Bill and Chris have been very active in our Historic Commission and they've done a great job, so. And then I would say for the Timberland Regional Library for the Thurston County, we conduct an interview similar to what we've done in the past, but move forward with the Mason County Appointment. And then with the Tourism Promotion Area, I recommend also moving forward with those as those are kind of specialty appointments from the TPA where they have to fit a certain guideline. They have to be owners of a hotel or lodging. Yeah, so.
So we need to circle back to the Mason County one. So there's two names here. Why is there two names if Mason County appointed Jewett?
In the recent past jurisdictions have been requesting all applications received by the other jurisdiction as making the appointment. So they just proactively provided both applicants to us.
So one thing that's going on here is that the appointment in Mason County, not only were there concerns before, but now this person's been charged with assault and is facing charges in Chilton Municipal Court. The appointment. Yeah, I'm going to need to know, but I'm not going to be comfortable moving that person forward, probably ever, but definitely without the information about what those, what those cases involve and what the allegations are. They're not resolved yet, their charges.
Could we reach out to the Mason County Commissioners? I mean, get the information from them. I would like to remind the Board that our appointments are also dependent on the confirmation of all the other counties as well. So seeing that we have an open appointment, that's going to have to go through each of the counties. I would like to have a good relationship with all of our appointing counties. So if we could get more information with, from the Mason County Commissioners, if they're planning to proceed in a different direction based on those charges or if they're planning to move forward and maybe get some sort of information from them.
Yeah, I'll definitely reach out.
So are you looking for a second?
So, yeah, since I guess that's a direction.
Can I ask for clarification? The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, did you also mention moving forward?
I, we already made a motion to appoint Lynn Roy.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I comment too on this Mason County appointment, that I also have serious concerns about this appointment, just echoing what Ty has to say, so I'm just going to make sure.
And I, yeah, I mean, when I heard the concerns I heard earlier, I was kind of along the lines of Commissioner Mejia. I was like, well, you know, this is really up to that county. But this, this potentially could put me in a place where I'm not comfortable, no matter what the implications are and the retaliation. I mean, we can't appoint people that we know are putting our Board at risk. And I mean, just depending on what the circumstances are. I think I need to hear that information and I do have a case number.
We'll get that from you.
Follow-up. I just heard this yesterday, so.
Yeah, we'll get that from the offline.
So just let me understand the entirety of the motion. So the motion is to go forward with Agriculture Advisory and Historic, pause on Civil Service, and pause on Mason County, forward with Tourism.
Promotion area and the Historic Commission.
Yep, so we have three sets that we're going forward on, two pauses, and then we'll discuss the process for our TRL Thurston appointments. Is that, am I capturing what you?
No, I said for the TRL to move forward with the interview process that we've done in the past.
I just have one request that we do a push to, for applications for the Regional Library one because there's a lot of people watching it. I want to make sure that we can say that we cast a wide net and we did a push on social media to look for applications.
We can push recruitment over the next couple of weeks and as if any more received, we can include them in the interview.
I would appreciate that.
Can I, and I just want to ask, this is just a thing. So for, for me, I'm wondering, I'm wondering if we can get more information. Well, I guess I can look at this, but I tried to look here, but to know what districts, for example, like on Historic Commission, Bill Lindstrom and Chris Hoffman. I know that there are different districts that they represent, but it doesn't say on there. I don't have the ability to figure out what that is based on this application. So just wondering if, I'm totally fine moving forward, but I just, as far as like maybe next time we can get a little more information, just so I also know if we still have an opening in District 2.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, I think we'll do, add the districts that, so when we do the rundown, that what district they're representing, but we'll also add if there are any vacant districts so you can see that at a quick glance.
And I noticed that the application doesn't actually have that on there either. So there's nowhere for them to say like who they, which board seat they're, you know, trying to fill or something like that, so.
Change too. And so regarding the Timberland Regional Library Board Trustees, we'll look to do another two-week push and then schedule interviews like we have in the past after that two-week push. Is that agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
That way we can keep that moving and know that the Executive Director appreciates the work this Board is doing on its position, but mentioned to me that it's a priority for them to see that move forward.
Okay, so in my view, the legislative action that we take is when we vote on them at the meeting to appoint them. So at this point, I think we're all in consensus on the direction that Commissioner Mejia laid out. I saw it, I thought Commissioner Claus's phone, so I think we're good.
The Civil Service Commission Appointment, looking at the applicant, and I know we're holding on that one, but my question is, I see an address as Centrelia, Washington. And like, I know that other Civil Service Commissions that I've been part of or oversaw, they have to be residents of the jurisdiction that they're representing. And there's some other weird rules, like half of the commission, you can't have any, any political party having more a majority on the commission. So my question, can they live in Centrelia and be on the commission and how are we ensuring that we're maintaining that proper balance?
We'll circle back with staff who can confirm their eligibility and.
Okay.
There's some Centrelia, where they have Centrelia in the address in Thurston County, so. And then she says lifelong Thurston County.
Yeah, I just, it's blacked out, so I can't see where exactly that is because you're right, in the bottom part of Thurston County, they would have a Centrelia address if they're, but just want that vetted.
Okay, anything else we need to address?
All I have today. Thank you.
Anything else from the Board on the appointments? Nope. Okay. Make sure item's up next. One, Item 1 is Jail Space Crisis Working.
Just give Chair, a minute for the Sheriff to log on.
Okay. Eagles or Chiefs? Got to freak this out.
I want the Eagles, but I think the Chiefs will win.
Rachel. Rachel.
Ditto, easy. Would be historic for the Chiefs to do the three P.
Yep.
Yeah, I know, me too.
Sheriff Sanders. Eagles or Chiefs?
Oh, he's gonna say Eagles or his wife will kill him.
Yeah, go Philly.
All right, so we just called up the jail space crisis work group, uh, item, and I'll turn it to county manager to frame the issue.
Yeah, I wanna thank the sheriff for, uh, raising an important item, uh, before the commission this morning. This is, I think, a longstanding situation that, uh, this conversation with me, uh, we think there's a way to start bringing folks together to have a broader conversation about what needs to take place. Understanding, um, from the chair, uh, it was very helpful to get the background. There's, there's been a lot of conversations that have taken place over the last several years. So I'll pass over to you, Sheriff Sanders, who can give a quick overview of your thoughts and how you'd like to approach this.
Uh, yeah, so, um, this is something that Commissioner Mensah and I have been discussing for quite some time. Um, it's been onboarding the county manager. I think most of our conversations, whether we knew it or not, were really focused about long-term, uh, solutions. But I, we're just at a point where it doesn't really feel like we can wait much longer. Um, I don't think anyone has thirty, forty, fifty million dollars lying around to build the second half of the jail like was always intended right this moment. Uh, even if we did, that still feels like a, a five to ten year project if we started now. So, um, really the goal here is to, um, get a work group going and hopefully get one going quickly that's meeting on a routine basis, um, to really find a short-term solution and discuss what a long-term solution looks like. I, I think that generally speaking, uh, no one really likes the thought of building more jails, building more prisons. Um, but I do think that that is still outweighed by the fact that no one likes to think of people being crammed inhumanely into a jail or a prison. So those two topics are clashing pretty hard right now. Um, we've had a number of disability groups come through and it just feels like we're, we're just one step away from being sued on this issue. Uh, we do not have enough space in our jail for mentally ill sex offenders or high violent persons. Um, this jail was built in an open dorm setting. There is only one pod, the Charlie unit, for, um, celled space. And we have a serious lack of celled space in our jail. We are at max capacity to the point where we told, uh, patrol deputies, if you don't have to take anyone to jail over the weekend, please don't, uh, which is not a good premise to operate under. Um, the other issue is that we can't quite quantify who's going to end up in that max unit because sometimes people go into the jail cooperatively and things turn sour once they're inside, once they're actually inside the facility. So you may look and see like, oh, we're just taking a cooperative DUI to jail. And then once they're inside, they go absolutely berserk, they end up in the max unit and there's just, there's zero space. Um, another big piece of this is the mental health side of things. Um, a large section of that celled space is being taken up by mentally ill people and they cannot be housed together. So we have an entire quadrant of our jail inside the max unit that has space for two, for two beds and a cell that are only housing one person. So just a number of issues. And I think the goal of this work group is to take a top view, not necessarily, we have already done our research and feel like we have a solution that's viable. However, really looking at all the different pieces, what will it cost to build a flex unit and, and staff it? Um, what would it cost to contract? There's no one who's gonna contract, but basically just looking at all of the different options out there. Uh, and then bringing something, basically what my goal with this work group is to bring back at least three options for the board to consider, uh, moving forward and how much each of those is gonna cost in totality. That includes infrastructure, renovations, ongoing staffing needs, um, just the whole operation of what it would take.
And Sheriff, what would be the composition of the bo, of the work group in, or the best composition in your, in your estimation?
I would at least like to have a county commissioner part of this. I think this was kind of the initial goal, um, when we first talked about having five county commissioners was the ability to delegate out a county commissioner to be part of these work groups and come back and report back to their peers, um, uh, one or two of them. And then I, I think at that point in time, I would also request that all the major stakeholders, at least they have one representative, so that's IT, uh, central services. Um, I mean, anyone you can think of from, from all these different, I know I'm gonna forget some of them, but, um, I would delegate that to the county manager on that side to say, hey, here's all of our stakeholders that need to be a part of this, uh, conversation. And then on our side, I will have Chief Hovda under Sheriff, uh, Mancius. And then we will also bring a number of individuals from the jail, uh, who are kind of our subject matter experts. And I'd also like to bring the, um, at least one representative from the jail union along as well so that they're kept in the loop because a lot of their grievances have come from, um, deputy safety inside the facility.
Commissioner Grant.
Um, well, uh, yeah, thanks for bringing this forward. So, uh, oh, I actually wrote something just cause I needed to, you know, make sure that I, um, represented this. So I think this is a great idea. I, I, I would agree that, um, that we need a short-term solution, but we definitely need to think about the long-term solution as well. Um, you know, and, uh, and, you know, I fully take, support taking, you know, this kind of structured and data, you know, approach where we think about, we've got, cause we really have to look at like current capacity issues, caseload trends moving forward, all of these different pieces are, can get really complicated. Um, you know, uh, and also to, to really be looking at the integration of behavioral health um, in, you know, and how we're going to make sure that that's represented as well. Um, you know, and so I, um, I just wanna recommend to this group that we think about, yes, move forward with a short-term, um, um, solution group, you know? And, um, I think that that's a great idea, work group. Um, but I also would really like to recommend that we consider thinking about working with a consultant. We're putting out an RFP for a consultant, um, to have them come and look at jail space, courtroom space and behavioral health, um, uh, wraparound services for that long-term solution. For us to be looking at what do we, what do we, this county, what are we going to need in ten years? Um, because, you know, there's this movement of Olympic, you know, of DSHS's, um, Maple Lane. There's gonna be all of these different moving parts over the next several years that could double what you need right now, you know? And so that would be my suggestion is that we do kind of a, a, a both and sort of thing. Um, uh, I also would love to volunteer, I'll just say that, that, um, you know, um, I've, I have my previous roles and, um, working in different agencies, one of those included working with King County Jail on this exact issue. Um, I was a budget chief at that point. Um, and so we looked at how can we accommodate, you know, space in the King County Jail and re, you know, to deal with the highly mental ill, um, you know, and how can we, um, partner? And so, um, uh, I'm very interested in this and I think that you, I, you know, you and I have talked about this, but I definitely think that we've gotta do something short-term. And, um, you know, and I am willing to, um, to serve and partner on this if it's necessary.
Great, Commissioner Meehan.
Thank you. Um, I was actually, thank you, uh, Commissioner Grant. Um, this has been just such a long issue that's taken up so much time. And, uh, being, I think, in this work group, having historical context and to all of the things that have already been tried is, I think is also important. Um, I know Commissioner Mensah, this has been an area of passion for you in the past. Um, and so just kinda wanted to hear your perspective and kind of where you're at on, on this work group.
Sure, well, yeah, I mean, going to your first point, like, we spent a good portion of twenty nineteen, I was going back through my notes to try to get the county manager up to speed. I was going back through all my paperwork and my notes and I re, reconstructed the kind of conversation that we spent the bulk of twenty nineteen discussing a twenty sixteen memo that, you know, was, so the, the conversation, at least as of twenty sixteen, was like going, died, got resurrected because the problem never got solved in twenty nineteen. We were, we kinda grud, you know, grudgingly went forward with some design on flex unit and then COVID hit. That really bought us a few years because jail, you know, the, the rules and the jail population went so far down, it kind of reduced the acuity of what we were facing in twenty nineteen. But now we're back, it's, it's back, like, we're back to normal and the jail's back to where it was and no solution has materialized. Um, and I was working on, as, as the sheriff said, I was, my eyes were more focused on the long-term solution of regional jail, potentially being able to check a lot of boxes and solve a lot of problems at once, but that's stalled, it's kinda restarted again. But again, as the sheriff said, that's like, we're looking down the road at that. Meanwhile, we have this resurfaced acute need. And given that I've been working on this and the county's been working on this for as long as it, as it has, some of the things that I wasn't willing to consider in twenty nineteen, I'm more willing to consider now just because it's five years later and the problem hasn't solved. So I'm, things that seemed like too big a leap for me in twenty nineteen, my mind is, I'm, I'm willing to take a step back and say, maybe we gotta think about that despite the fact that this person doesn't like it or that person doesn't like it or this, you know, it's gonna cost this or create this, you know? So, so I could, for me, I just kinda wanna go back to, back to where we were in twenty nineteen, over, an overview of all the different options and see what could be most, could fit the best. Um, I was kinda, you know, I mean, I wasn't sure what in five years, you know, what, what, what we could come up with or what the state might come up. And there's, I know Commissioner Fornier sits on a task force, like two different task force going on at the state level to deal with this, so, you know, I was like, not sure what kind of monies and solutions might come. But I agree with the sheriff at this point that we don't have a solution and we have a serious problem. And, um, I think this work group is warranted. So whether I sit on it or Commissioner Grant or two of us, I mean, I, I, that's, I, I don't really care. I don't have to be the one per se, but I, I do think that I am concerned about finding a short-term solution or a medium-term solution. And can I get to the sheriff maybe and then I'll jump back? Do you have a response to that, Sheriff Sanders?
I just wanted to say, my, my recommendation, just, just seeing how a lot of these things play out, um, would be that two commissioners sit on this, a primary, maybe an alternate, but both cer, certainly could attend the same meeting. Um, just because I, I don't wanna see, I think this is important enough that every meeting needs to count, uh, even if we only meet monthly. Like, I'd hate to be like, oh, well, we just can't get together, you know? Like, if I'm not there, Mancius will be there or Hovda will be there, uh, to make sure these meetings are progressing forward. I don't wanna see this delayed. Um, and again, this was kind of my, my theory of, your concept when I supported the five commissioner, um, setup. So I just wanted to add that piece in there that I don't think it should just be one commissioner, it should be two.
Okay, I'll go to Commissioner Fornier and then back to Commissioner Meehan.
Um, yeah, I mean, I was gonna say, I, I, I was interested in, in serving, but I, 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 my, my biggest hope is that Commissioner Mensah steps up and continues to be on it because I think the history is, is important and I don't want that to get, to get lost from the commission's perspective. Uh, I think two is a great suggestion and if those two are Commissioner Mensah and Commissioner Grant, I think we're, we'd be well represented.
Thank you. I, I also kinda wanna loop in, um, I'll give a little bit of perspective. So, uh, when I came in, um, and joined, uh, the Legislative Steering Committee, jails were a big topic and this was an ongoing issue. And all of the counties needing either new jails or to update their jails. And so just based on those conversations with our lobbyists at the time, Juliana Rowe, um, we sent in our numbers of what, you know, it would cost. It came out in the billions, um, and that was not including King County. Um, and so that's where the statewide study came from as, uh, an avenue to give, uh, the state legislator kind of a view into the impacts that we're, um, that we're all struggling with across the thirty-eight counties. And so I just wanna be sure with this work group that whatever's going on at the statewide side and whatever results are coming down from that study, that they're also included. Um, and that they're working kind of, that we're getting that information into this work group because if there is going to be a request to the legislator, I think that, you know, we need to be aware of it and, and that's something that the work group needs to also contend with and, and let the stakeholders know. So I, I'm not sure, Commissioner Fornier, I know you sit on, on that, uh, committee. Is there an update on when the study's going to come out?
It, it's, there's a due date.
Yeah, I saw it.
Like by the end of the year.
Yeah, and I'll, and it's okay for me to, um, so I'll echo that, you know, that I think that that's probably one of the reasons why I'm really interested in, in sitting on this is, well, I think we started, I'll just say as a state, I'm gonna say as, as the state itself started looking at this as an issue back in two thousand sixteen. I get, it's been like, um, you know, uh, jail and tech, you know, the CJTA, there's all these different funding sources and all of these different things that, that, um, you know, we've, they've tried to patch together and there's this need, I mean, you know, it's, it's common data that seventy-five percent of people who are within the jail are dealing with a mental health issue, you know? And, um, you know, and so, uh, and really those are the ones who end up there, right? And so it really is, um, something that has to be looked at in partnership with the different agencies that are working on this on the back end through the legislature, you know, so through funding. So DSHS has a responsibility and that was who I used to represent, you know, to, to fund the needs for forensic mental health. And, um, and that includes infrastructure and space. And so I think that I, I would totally echo this, that we need, uh, you know, a really comprehensive look at and to see, figure out how by next year's session, we can get some money, you know, uh, possibly in the capital budget or something like that, that could really, um, you know, help us, um, you know, at least in the short term. And then again, like I said, in the long term, we, we really do need to be thinking critically about the overall system and what are we gonna do, you know, and, um, and how are we gonna get there, so.
So if, if I'm, I'm hearing concurrence about this work group being warranted, so I guess the next topic would be kinda how do we organize it or who, you know, who leads setting agendas or, you know, kind of the backbone of any type of committee like that? Um, is there any thought about that?
I would say that don't, not necessarily committee, just a work.
Yeah.
Led by the, the sheriff with other stakeholders. Um, county manager will bring our departments that need to be at the table for the relevant discussions about, um, county operations. But, uh, and what I would also recommend is possibly a, a work session where we can bring and circulate the memos you provided to me, to the commissioners, because I do believe that before you jump in, there is a, um, uh, getting up to speed that should take place with all the commissioners.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to spend time reinventing the wheel or going back. There's a lot of history there that you presented to me and you, and I think that if you and the sheriff were to lead that, that, um, study session, um, and, and, uh, just, we go through questions that commissioners will have as they read those documents. Uh, I think there's a lot of great information that was compiled already.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So a two-pronged approach, we have that study session quick. Uh, Derek and I offline put together the framework of this work group. And to Derek's point, we gotta get, and we'll parallel track them and get a meeting scheduled with the work group and also schedule a study session.
Okay.
And do we need a motion to appoint Commissioner Grant and Commissioner Mensah to the work group? Okay, so I would move, uh, to create the jail space crisis work group uh, and give direction to the county manager to, uh, work with stakeholders, to set those meetings, to, uh, come up with a short-term and long-term solution in regards to our jail space and appoint, uh, Commissioner, uh, Mensah and Commissioner Grant, uh, to represent the board on the jail space crisis work group.
Second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I think I missed.
Real quick comment, I, I just wanna just flake this, that I, it would be really, um, awesome if we could add a representative on that work group from the BHO or from Thurston Mason BHO. Um, because they know, and I'll just say this, uh, they have that, uh, funding aspect that might be helpful, um, where we might be able to pull some funding. So just, uh, if we can get them to do something, then I would love to see them as one rep, one person represented on that group, so.
Sheriff, you have any objections to that?
No, um, I've, I've said this in a number of different settings with Commissioner Mensah, you know, we actually solve the mental health side of this.
Yeah, for sure.
You would probably find that there'd be less jail to build.
What is the, um, uh, on the Charlie unit, what is the capacity of that unit for folks to be celled?
Give me just a minute, I gotta pull it up. It varies by, by unit just a little bit, so give me a moment.
As, as, um, the sheriff's pulling it up, uh, what, just to make sure they're, we're all clear. As an assumption to pulling this together, our, I would imagine that our law and justice, um, partners will be all part of this work group as well.
Like prosecutor and stuff like that?
Yeah, just to, to offer, is that what the board is envisioning?
I think when he was talking about stakeholders, I, I think that's what.
We can work that offline.
Yeah, so the, the Charlie unit, uh, is a quadrant. So it's a quadrant of, of basically double-tiered, single cells. And, uh, the Charlie Adam unit is specific to mentally ill population. That has a capacity of twenty-nine double beds. So twenty-nine inmates. In theory, it could hold double that amount, um, if you double bump each cell. But mentally ill patients, they, they don't make good neighbors, um, so they have to be single housed. Uh, and then you've got Charlie Boy, which is a capacity of thirty-one. You have Charlie Charlie, a thirty-one capacity, and Charlie David, which is twenty-nine. And between those, you've got, um, like our sex offender unit, um, obviously, those individuals, these are all the individuals who can't be housed with others. And so, when you look at the classifications, that our classifications deputies are trying to do, they're trying to separate out people who are mentally ill, have to go here. But then, you've got your sex offenders, who have to go here by themselves, they're all locked together. And then you've got high violence. But then, amongst even that, you've got, for instance, inmate A, who doesn't like inmate B, C, and D, which means that each of them have to be spread out throughout the different dorms, which could lead to a low-level offender ending up in a max unit, to avoid the other offenders who are, are gonna fight each other. And there's been a lot of fights in the E-dorm lately, as a result of having to push down some of those high-violent offenders into open dorms. So it's just creating one issue after another. Quite frankly, the E-dorm right now is the Wild West. We're paying overtime indefinitely to have a second corrections deputy in there, um, and even that's not enough. It, it's, it's just, it's gotten to be a lot in there, especially when the population of the E-dorm, which is now a mixture of mentally ill, low, low-level mentally, lower-end mentally ill, high-violent offenders, and medium-level offenders, all being housed in the same unit, open dorm style, of sixty-plus inmates. That, it's like a, it's like a cauld, a cauldron, like being stirred around all the time. It's just, it's very tense in there.
And then, that breakdown really doesn't, doesn't even incorporate the gender.
Right.
Like, question, because you may have folks who are female and violent, or mentally ill, right?
They're in a separate area of the jail that was never intended to be lived in. They're in the transfer unit, um, which we have basically bolted some bunk beds to the floor. The transfer unit was designed to be an area where, um, inmates who were on the chain would be temporarily housed, getting ready to be shipped off to King County, or Pierce, whatever's on the chain. Uh, we have had to convert that space into living quarters, and add a deputy to that area, to, to basically manage that. That is also just a wild, a wild scenario that we have going on. That's what led the county commissioners to spend half a million dollars, a couple of years ago, to build that quote-unquote rec yard in the Sallyport, um, which is basically just a fence, so that those inmates could have outdoor time, because lawsuits were being threatened at that point in time. And so, it's just, everything we've looked at for the jail has just been one skimpy Band-Aid after another. And it's, we're, we're paying more money now than it feels like that it just solved the problem. Uh, which is why I kinda just wanna get the smartest people in a room together to say, here's how we're gonna solve this. And I, I think Commissioner Grant's onto something, getting the state and solve the BHO. You solve the mental health problem of this, and we really get to downsize the size of the jail expansion that we need. With the exception of me telling you that having a three-hundred-and-ninety-bed, uh, jail for a county of three-hundred-thousand people is already really, really small. That's really small. We should expect those numbers to be bursting at the seams all the time, based on that population. And, I'll even go one step further, it shows you just how much, um, the deputies and the scout team and mental health are diverting people from our criminal justice system. Because if we were arresting people who committed crimes, without any, any further dive into that issue, we, we'd have seven-hundred, eight-hundred, nine-hundred people in jail at any point in time.
I, I think this is all, uh, good information we can bring up in the work group. But also, we can frame that for when we do the study session, bring everybody up to speed on some important.
Yeah.
We'll work with the sheriff on.
That memo, you know, obviously, which is out of date, but just so you can see where commissioners have gone in looking at renovating the old jail, bringing in modular units.
Context.
Using the juvenile facility, doing, you know, all these different things were, were looked at, and, and costed out back in the napkin style. And, and it was, you know, operational costs and capital costs, and it, it, I mean, just so you can kinda see the journey that's got us to where we are. And then the sheriff describes kinda the state of the play right at this current moment.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, that's.
Once we get that unit up and going too, um, I'll get anyone who hasn't had a tour of the jail, they don't need to see the dorms necessarily. But, uh, whoever's on that work group really needs to understand what they're looking at, like the Charlie dorm and the transfer unit where people are staying. And we'll use that facility.
It could be like first meeting type of a.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, Sheriff, thank you for your time.
Cheers.
I was just texting Ashley and said, set me up a tour of the jail.
She was gonna say, we lost her, we lost her.
Oh, we lost her, and we got her back.
Oh.
So, uh, anything else to go cover today?
Just one other item, uh, commissioners. I received a, uh, phone call from the city manager of Lacey, Rick Walk. And I really appreciate him reaching out. It was just a outreach phone call for a concept, uh, not necessarily, um, uh, any immediate action, but I did wanna put it on all of your radars, um, and kinda get a sense from the board. The city of Lacey is moving forward with considering a, some type of park district. And the concept that the city manager mentioned to me, um, was, and it is just a concept, it doesn't, I don't know that there's council direction, I was just trying to get a feel from where we're at, is if the county would be interested in, in allowing the county's UGA portion to be included in that district, and looking at what potential the benefits could be if that were to take place. Now, there's a process that would have to happen, where it gave me a very high-level overview. My, uh, comment to Rick was, if there was something, um, a little bit, uh, more formalized that I could bring to the commission, to look at what would those benefits be, and how would we partner on that type of, uh, setup? What would be the mechanics of that? So Rick said that he would go back and talk to a few of his council members, and, um, come and, uh, and, and present something. So, just wanted to flag that for you, because I think that there could be an opportunity in that setup. Obviously, the, um, the approach is gonna be in some of the details. I can just keep talking to see their anxiousness, but I'll turn it over to you.
Unfortunately, I didn't see which one was first.
I was first.
Go ahead, County Manager.
That's all I have, I just wanted to flag it, because I, I think it was an important conversation. I really appreciate the city manager's innovation and collabora- collaboration to reach out, and just to, uh, have an idea that could potentially benefit our residents. Obviously, there's a long road to travel, but I thought bringing it to your attention sooner rather than later would probably be a good idea. I'll turn it back to you, Sheriff.
And I'll go after them, so, yeah.
Thank you. My question is in terms of, it sounds alluring. I know that in the past, we've asked for partnerships when it comes to park districts. So, um, with, with them, including the Lacey UGA, does that mean that we are getting that part of the revenue from the Lacey UGA? Is that their proposal? Or are they going to be getting all of that revenue, and then they're going to be covering basically the park services in all of that area? What is exactly?
I think that's, that's where there's opportunity for us. If the commission is interested to direct me to have those kind of official conversations, that's what we could work out and bring a proposal back. Rick was understanding and open to the fact that he would have to work for both parties, but, of course, he has to do his due diligence with his council. The reason I'm also bringing it forward is, I understand if City of Lacey is interested, is there's a timeframe, so we would have to move fairly quick. But I, I do think that there's an opportunity for us, um, to come up with what would be some components that would be advantageous for the county in an arrangement, um, to increase amenities and, and benefits for our county residents, as well as the City of Lacey residents.
I'm thinking that it's the latter of the two scenarios, knowing Lacey, and just what I heard from the mayor at the chamber thing, that they would like to, they'd run the park. Like, they're saying, saying, they're, they're res, they're UGA, our UGA residents access their parks already. It's kinda their argument, so, and we don't have the ability necessarily to provide what they could provide if they were included in the park district, with the funding mechanisms they would have. So they would, so there'd be like an MOU, where they would basically just take that all over.
And none of our parks are within their UGA. So it wouldn't be like our parks were being excluded. But an MPD sets up, uh, sets up a whole nother taxing district, essentially, like, just like a, a TBD. And there would be a board that sat over that. And if our, you know, it would be in the MOU, how that would be done, but I would imagine there would be some county representation, uh, during the time at which the UGA still exists. But as time goes on, and the city expands into the UGA, then it becomes part of the city, and there would probably be less county, uh, representation. And then, but that's just guessing, this is all like way down the road. But, the, the way it has been told to me, and, and the mayor's pretty excited about it, is, you know, they wanna get their MPD going, they've got a very aggressive parks plan, you know, they wanna expand the rack, 'cause the rack is just booming.
Greg Cuyo, they wanna do all kinds of.
Yeah, they wanna, they wanna work with North, North Thurston Public Schools on their big vision for this, uh, community center. They wanna do things at Long Lake Park. And, the UGA residents are, you know, for many purposes, Lacey residents that do benefit from those parks. And getting them in now, getting them early, allows them to kind of, uh, you know, disperse the, the burden of additional, you know, taxes. And it allows inclusion of those UGA residents into the park plans and the park, uh, vision. I, I'm excited about it, because I really, really wanna see, uh, our fairgrounds align better with Long Lake Park. And if you look, if you look at it from a map, like, if you've been to the fairgrounds a lot, you don't even realize that the fairgrounds are on Long Lake. Like, it's, I, you're, it, it's just, it's, the way the fairgrounds are set up, they're, they're very like road-facing, and there's no tie-in to the, to the Long, to Long Lake and, uh, Long Lake Park. And I, I think that's a huge missed opportunity. I feel that this, them coming to us, looking for collaboration, uh, I, I think that it gives us the opportunity to say, yes, Lacey, we love what you're doing with your parks, and we'd like to partner with you. And, uh, we have a vision for aligning Long Lake Park and the fairgrounds in a way where they're complementary. And I, I see, you know, water sports and camping capabilities throughout the summer that would allow the fairgrounds to be a more, uh, kind of a more robust offering than, than just what we use it as now. And I, I see this as a, kind of an opportunity to get in with them, and, and kind of see our needs met, or some of the, the visions that I'm hoping we sign up for, uh, included in their planning.
Commissioner Mead.
Thank you. Um, yeah. I would like to hear from our park staff, as well, and Public Works Department on this proposal, and how it would, um, benefit or impact, uh, them. And, um, and the specific Lacey UGA areas. So, I, I would like, if, an email briefing is fine, but just, I would like to know that perspective from, from our staff, who are actually on the ground doing the work, you know, as well, and, and, and getting their perspective on how something like this could, what it would do.
Yeah, and I, I, that's, you know, echoing, um, Commissioner Mead, he has said. I mean, I'm interested in entertaining it, I, I just really wanna make sure that, I think a concept coming from Lacey, uh, the city admin is great, you know, like, they can work on their kind of concept. But we really need, um, I would really like to see our staff, both budget and policy, so like park staff, uh, to be able to say, what will the impacts of the revenue be? You know, and that, like, and to actually just, just basic high-level, like, here are the different things that it could impact, um, and, and so that we can at least entertain, you know, what would the impacts be to us, and will they be negative, positive, all of that?
I, I just wanna point out, if they, if they create an MPD, that creates a whole new funding mechanism that doesn't affect any of our revenue. That's separate and, and outside of.
Yeah.
What we do, and, you know.
Some of ours.
What's that?
It would remove some of our revenue.
How?
We'd be giving it, our part of the UGA up.
No, because, you know, we collect property taxes there. We don't collect the newly-created MPD taxes.
What it gives up is our ability to pass a county-wide MPD. Because without the Lacey UGA voters, we'd never get it passed.
Yeah.
We'd never get it passed anyway.
Right.
But the, to, to me, what, what you're weighing is, what's the likelihood in ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years that we have the political desire and, um, vision to do a county-wide MPD? And, do we wanna trade that for, you know, better service to our residents in the short term? And maybe a concession on the fairgrounds alignment that Commissioner Fornier was talking about? I mean, I, I could see an argument, but like, you just have to understand, that's what you're sort of trading.
But, but it's no, no revenue out of our pocket right now.
Yeah, it's new revenue.
It would be giving up potential opportunity for us to do our own MPD, which we're not talking about now, and probab-, I can't imagine talking about in the next twenty years. I, you know, like, moving parks forward is hard in Thurston County. You know, we don't have the staff. In, matter of fact, all last year was, it was, well, look at Lacey, they have fifty parks employees, and we only have five. So, this would be signing on with them to help them get additional resources that we're not going to tap into, to make the parks within that region of Thurston County bigger, better, greater. And, uh, it's, it's, it's a, you know, it's a collaborative effort to improve parks there that we, I don't think we're going to do otherwise.
And, I, County Manager's hands up, but I just wanna respond to that, 'cause I think that it's easy when we sit as like a county commission, or Lacey, like, it's easy to get parochial and like, put, but, I do think that we can, we have a unique structure in having these three big cities mushed together. And a lot of people don't even know where they live, frankly. They don't even know they live in Olympia, or Lacey, or Temwata. And we can capitalize on that, by maximizing the chance to get more revenue for, I mean, I went to the rack all the time as a parent.
I go to the rack every week.
So, even though I live in Northwest Olympia, like, I was always at the rack with my kids playing sports. So, if the, so like, I benefit from a district, my district three representative constituent benefit from, in Thurston County, and I'm a county resident, not a city resident. We benefit from a good rack, or a good Greg Cuyo park, or whatever. So, we can think about that, I mean, just balancing all the considerations. I do think we, we work together and are kinda mushed together in a way that, that makes it like, it makes it reasonable to look at, how do we take this, all the tools that we have, and maximize them for our residents' benefit? County Manager, and then Commissioner Mead.
I, I think the first step is, if the board is interested, then I can engage Rick with the confidence that, from a concept to figuring out what the details are. There's nothing really for me to evaluate at this point, because there are no details. So if the city of Lacey would like to move this from concept to a more deeper discussion, then at least I know I can do that with board direction, if that's what the board would like to do. And knowing that, once we get details, I will immediately bring those back for full, um, commission consideration, so that we can start looking at the financial impact, potential staffing impact, amenity impact, all those things that we would definitely wanna bet through. Because they mentioned time was of the essence.
'Cause they wanna go, I think, on August ballot. Which is why this is all, could be very difficult to.
And I don't, I don't know from concept if, if this is still something they would like to do. I would just like to, with certainty, say, um, to the city manager, yeah, we are interested, let's sit down. Because there is a potential opportunity here, and I know that you all need all those details in order to weigh it up. So, I wouldn't take this as, yes, go it and do it. I would take direction to, to engage the city manager at a deeper level, to figure out, how do we get to, is this something that they're comfortable with, that we could be comfortable with? And then I can bring back to all of you for that review.
I mean, I, I was told they had a retreat, and they kinda retreated from the, retreated, but they retreated from the concept of, of a, uh, that might have been based on a misunderstanding of where we were at, I don't know. But you may get, you may call Rick and say, well, we've already decided not to. It's just too, too many moving pieces. That's what I'd heard, like, at the tail end of last week.
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, just, you know, the rack was county funds, I, I believe, or it was something where, where the county, uh, you know, and so, you know, our, our constituents did also contribute to, to, you know, pay for that park. And then, I, I also want, uh, the MPD history added on to there, because I know in the past, our Public Works Department has approached several jurisdictions to be in partnership, and they've turned us down. And I think it's valuable for us to know that information too, right? Because there's, there's been multiple proposals in the past, uh, about forming a metropolitan district park, you know, throughout the county. And, um, and we've tried to be a part of a conversation several times, and several times, we've been pushed out of that conversation. And so, like, for me, like, yeah, I would like to see a proposal, uh, and really hear from, from staff, too, right? And, um, also get that full history of those different proposals that were, uh, that were in the past, so.
Yeah, and then the last thing, you know, I'll say is, uh, I, first of all, I just wanna make sure, you know, that I'm, I, anything that will improve our. Yeah. And then the last thing, you know, I'll say is, uh, I, first of all, I just wanna make sure, you know, that I'm, I, anything that will improve our parks and, and. You know, bring more people out, I, I'm down for, you know, so like, I mean, I think I love this idea of we need to think about our parks and how we're going to. Improve them and how we're gonna pay for improving them. That's absolutely true, but, um, and I just wanna, and I'll just echo this again, that. I wanna make sure that we have our interests, um, represented before we move forward and that we have some data and actual. You know, um, before, you know, and so that would just be really nice to kinda have, um, before we can really decide if we wanna formally move forward and. Entertaining a concept. Yeah.
Yeah, I would just, I mean, I would only caution the county manager, like to, if, as you express interest or willingness to discuss. That it's, it's just, you know, an inquiry, you know, like not that. We are sold on this or we're, but you know, just that it's. Not overstated that, you know, where we're at, but that we're definitely interested in hearing, talking about more specific, um, details. Or consideration.
Yeah, I think it helps if, um, if the direction is given to me to engage, uh, to bring back those proposals. With the details so that you can, you can have your, uh, have something to sink your teeth into. And we can work with our team to bring the historical context of what conversations have taken place.
And the thing is, they may not, I mean, with Commissioner Fornier's idea, like they may not know that that's what we would kinda want, right? Like it's, you know, we, we can be proactive too and.
Well, we, we have talked to them a little bit about that, the concept of lining the park and the fairgrounds. So, but it's. You know, like how far did that get? Did that get down into, you know, into the staff discussions? How aware of that are they? Um, I, I think it's important that they understand that we are not saying no. If, if they're, you know, if there's, if they're split, you know, maybe they want, maybe they're just coy about asking, maybe they don't, you know, they don't know how to approach us. But, you know, like we are very willing to collaborate and we wanna, we wanna know more. And so, you know, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to give direction to the county manager to, you know, go forth and. Uh, you know, represent our, our interest in learning more, knowing that it's, you know, it's, it's timely. And, uh, that, that we are not, we're not at all opposed.
I, I'm not comfortable with that motion.
Do we need a motion to give staff direction?
And, you know, I, I wanna just echo on, on some of this, that, uh, you know, I'm feeling like, I'm wondering when we are gonna have a retreat. Because, um, because, you know, I don't feel like we have clear direction as a, as a board at the moment, um, on what our priorities are. Because this, you know, that would be a large lift, um, uh, coordination for our staff and our, um. And, um, the resources that we have internally to work on the metropolitan district at the same time we have a jail crisis.
We don't know that.
House crisis.
We don't know that.
But, but what we need to do as a board is to set our own goals so that we all can then make those, these decisions like, okay, we all decided this was gonna be. You know, the most important, you know, so, and we don't know that. You're right, Wayne. I'm just saying.
If it's an MOU, that's, I mean, and it's, and they're the ones proposing the MPD.
Yeah.
That's, you know, and so we're, we're supporting it, uh, you know, we're maybe helping pass, pass it on a ballot. But the, the, you know, the, the heavy lifting and the, the work is done by them and we're in concert.
I wanna say that I don't think that, I mean, I'm just gonna be blunt. I don't. I don't know when you have to file for an August ballot, but the idea that these details would get completely worked through in time for that filing. Seems very far fetched to me. I just think they've set too aggress- I think it's a concept I could maybe get on board with, but. They've set a timeline. They didn't engage us early enough to get, to, to get the details worked out for what would be required to get to an August ballot. I don't know why that's the, the, you know, and, and maybe they would back off that if they thought that, that they, they, they can make a partnership with the county. Maybe that would be more important than the timing, but I just don't see how we get to what we're all talking about as what we would need to see. By the filing date of an August ballot.
So, um, I would move to give direction to the county manager to touch base with the Lacey city manager. And, uh, get more information or a formal proposal on what, uh, their recommendation is. For a metropolitan park district, uh, and then to come back to the board, uh, with that information. Uh, as well as a staff information and timeline on this. Uh, and then I would add, I would like to know if. Election costs, since it's in the Lacey UGA, if that would fall on us or are they willing to, uh, absorb those costs as well?
Second. Motion and second on that.
So just to clarify the motion that this, we're asking them to come back for a concept, uh, of what we're formal and our staff. Our staff interests, um, along with that.
Yeah.
And then we'll, okay, yep, okay.
Any other discussion on that?
And, and I would just say, like, found aid, I would never bring something forward without our staff interest. Um. Um, so that would be always something we bake into, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay, all favors say aye.
Alright.
Okay. Uh, are there commissioner items before we?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, um, I, I do have an item. Um, I, I'd let the county manager know I was going to bring this and this is in terms of the fan zone. Um, and so, uh, touch based with, uh, uh, executive now, uh, Ryan Mello. Uh, just because I heard a rumbling is that they were working on something in terms of a fan, uh, zone request. And so I just wanted to be sure that. When we weren't missing the boat, uh, and that we were, you know, be sure to, that we were looped into the conversations. And so, uh, he said that Mayor Woodards and him have been discussing working with all nine fan zones on a legislative request. Um, they're not sure whether that means amplifying the Seattle Chamber request, uh, which, uh, they think is the same as the local organizing committee's request. Um, or developing one that augments it and tries hard to inc- incorporate all nine fan zones. Um, and so their chief of staff, Jamie Smith, has been tracking, uh, tho- those conversations. Um, and so I just want to be sure, um, you know, that. That we're continuing to, uh, to be looped into those conversations. Um, and I'm not sure, you know, if they're going to reach out to you, Commissioner Mans, or who they're going to reach out to. Um, but I, you know, I just, I was concerned when I heard rumblings that, you know, maybe. One of them was going to put something in. Um, I think there just needs to be a lot of, uh. You know, the nine fines, fan zones need to, to coordination when, uh, we do this. And, um, also on a federal level as well, um, I, I know that, uh, the LC, LLC. Put in, um, a, a federal funding request and as we get that information, um, you know, we're. I'm going to be going to NACO. It's something that I'm happy to go and advocate for. Um, so just kind of. Keeping tabs on that and, uh, something that I'm closely tracking.
Okay, questions on that? I, yeah, I mean.
Commissioner, is there anything, uh, staff we need to do to plug in to the fan zone?
My, we were told at our meeting that in early February, we'd be getting a, like a handbook of sorts. And I was sort of in my brain, using that as like a trigger to then maybe. Reach out to our jurisdictions and come up with a local committee that we could start work, cause we have to make decisions about. Who will, you know, be organized. So anyway, so that's kinda where I was at. That was sort of separate from the legislative piece though. Obviously, the legislature is. In session and, and, and so, I mean, you know, Commissioner Hearn's point is valid in the sense that we don't have. Any real coordinated way of organizing legislative acts or anything like that at this point.
Should, uh, I loop you in? Jamie Smith is their staff person from Pierce County who's.
Jamie Smith?
Yeah, who's coordinating this. I'm.
What's her role or his, his role?
Uh.
Position? Economic development or?
No, I think that's their, I'm not sure. It's part of the, his executive team. I'm not sure exactly what her position title is. Um. All he said was Jamie's tracking on this and that included her, but that's, that's it. Um, so I'll, I'm happy to send over that contact information, maybe kind of looping in and being sure that we're included in those conversations.
Yeah, happy to make that connection so we can keep the, all, all the commissioners updated, but then also, um. Connect with my counterparts in the cities, uh, so.
Yeah, the mayor of Lacey has asked me kinda, you know, cause he missed that meeting in Seattle. He's like, what's the next step? And I said that we'd, we'd be reaching out to sort of convene a, a local committee as soon as we get the kinda handbook from the lo- from the. The local organizing group. Okay. On the same, uh, vein about legislative issues, just real quick. I had one, I, the, for, the proviso that led to replacement land, purchase money. The last two legislative sessions and is hopefully gonna result in some legacy forest protection in Thurston County this year. Um, and that's coming from the natural climate solutions piece of Climate Commitment Act funds. And there's another ask and, and with, you know, this has been year by year, one-time funding. They're gonna ask for forty-four million dollars. Uh, there's gonna be a one pager coming out and my request would be that we. For, I mean, it's, it's in line. It keeps beneficiaries. It's the best way to try to keep, you know, to balance all the interests and. Um, at this juncture. And so I would, we've supported that in the past. I would suggest that when I, when we receive that. We've let the county manager send it to Deborah for potential, letting legislators know that we support that. Funding for coming out of that account.
Yeah, we got that direct, uh, the thumbs up right now. That'll, as soon as we get it, Josh and I will work to cue Deborah up to move forward as a board priority.
Thumbs up on there, that one? Alright, good. Thank you. Um, okay, other commissioner items? Okay, then we're adjourned. Thank you.